Okay, let's, let's kick this off. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corvino City Council to order on March 9th, 2021 via Zoom technology. Roll call, please.
That's Mary Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Present.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and some city staff that are in the wings, so to speak. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended.
Removed.
Moved by Gross.
Second.
I think that was Goodrich, we'll give this one to Lori. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. We have a proclamation tonight that I would like to read proclaiming March for Meals on Wheels Week. City of Corvino proclamation. Whereas the Meals on Wheels program of Elder Services Incorporated has been providing hot meals and friendly faces to homebound seniors for the greater Iowa City, Corvino, and Johnson County area for 20 years. And whereas Meals on Wheels relies on volunteer drivers to deliver hearty and nutritious meals five days per week for over 115 clients. And whereas it is projected that Johnson County will have 22,689 people 65 years or older by the end of 2021, and thus the vital services provided by Meals on Wheels will be increasingly in demand. And whereas the Meals on Wheels program is participating in the 2021 March for Meals campaign with the Meals on Wheels Association of America in an effort to increase awareness, recruit new volunteers, and increase funding. And whereas it is the mission of Elder Services Incorporated to provide programs, services, and resources to assist persons aged 60 and over in Johnson County and East Central Iowa to stay active, independent, and safe in their homes. And whereas the centerpiece of the week-long campaign is the Mayor's for Meals Day on March 9th, where mayors and elected officials show their support for Meals on Wheels by delivering meals to seniors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the City of Corvino, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 22nd to 26th, 2021, to be March for Meals on Wheels Week in Corvino, and applaud and embrace the important work of Meals on Wheels of Elder Services Incorporated in our community and the spirit of generosity and volunteerism that makes completely its mission as possible, completing its mission possible. Signed this ninth day of March 2021, John A. Lundell, Mayor. We were expecting Kay Fisk this evening to speak to us. Mr. Clerk, yes she is, Kay? Would you like to unmute yourself and speak to us?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much, Mayor, for proclaiming that wonderful proclamation. I must admit, I'm filling in for the regular person that would be with you tonight from Elder Services. She is still working very hard on trying to get COVID shots for many of the people who are in the housing areas, multiple housing areas for older adults. So I certainly know that that's a good mission, so I'm happy that I can fill in. First of all, I will say that the need is not going to flatten or get less, it's going to get more in the future. In the last decade, we've seen about a 17% growth in older adults. And nationwide by 2030, there's an expectation that we could see at least that, if not more, and this is nationwide, so of course that will affect our Johnson County and Lynn County area as well. So why am I telling you this? I'm telling you because we know that it's, it's, it's going to be a continuation of, you know, trying to raise funding, hoping that the Older Americans Act, which we know is a government program, will step up and start giving us just a little bit more money. We're at the mercy of that particular program because it is a federal program, about all we can do is talk to our, our state senators and representatives to urge them to support this. So, you know, if you have any, any chances and you read or see anything that would benefit the meal program that you could talk to in your, let's suppose, please do so, because it is very important. The other thing that's very important for the meal program is volunteers. It's absolutely amazing the amount of work they do for us. The meal, of course, is a very important part of the Meals on Wheels program, it is the main part, but so close to being first and tied with first place is the volunteer visit. Because many of our clients are homebound, the only people they see are volunteers that come to their house every day. And they serve as a friend and somebody to visit with, but we also have the eyes and ears of those volunteers to know how the client's doing. They can see changes, things that are happening that we wouldn't be aware of if we didn't have that one-on-one with them. And we can remind them ways to ask them leading questions like, have you taken your meds today? If you checked your blood sugar? And God forbid that we find somebody that has fallen. And that has happened on occasion where we have found someone that has fallen and not been able to get back. So, one visits to the home are one of the most important parts of the meal delivery. And this last year, we've added some new services. COVID has like affected the older adults the same as it has everyone. And they're able to get out even less than before, if at all. So the things that we might find just kind of routine, like toothpaste and shampoo, can often be something that an older adult is very much in need of. So we've started supplying some personal hygiene products and some cleaning supplies, some paper good products, and we kind of rotate that, and we don't just deliver it without finding out first if they need the items, but just making sure that they have the needs above and beyond the, the food. Just as I work in Lynn County, but I'm very closely associated with the Elder Services in Johnson County, and the amazing things that come from your community and the communities that we serve is amazing. Without the donations, without the intervention from restaurants and different kinds of options, we couldn't do what we do. We don't have, we barely do the funding for the meals. We would never be able to go out and purchase all of these items that I just mentioned. So, these are, are, is a real tribute to your community that has, that in the past has stepped up. Of course, Corvino helps us out monetarily, and that is greatly appreciated. I'll probably be visiting with you, Kelly, again soon to talk about maybe a slight increase, so be prepared. Haven't talked to you for a long time, so I always enjoy that. But again, thank you for all you do for us, and thank you for the proclamation, and it's great to be a part of it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Well, thank you, Kay. That was a great, a great description of a wonderful program. In the past, I've had the opportunity to-
It is, indeed.
Yeah, and I've had a chance on, on Mayor's Day to go out and deliver meals, and it's one of the things I most enjoy doing throughout the year, because exactly as you said, these folks are so happy to, to see a new face, and they get a kick out of the fact it's the mayor, and I really enjoy that, that opportunity.
Yes, oh my gosh, yeah.
I always, I go with the regular volunteer, and he or she always knows exactly who, where to go to begin with, but also what do you expect and who to ask, and you know, what questions to ask and things like that. So it's, it's a smooth looking program, very valuable program. So, well, thanks for joining us tonight.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your good work.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Bye. Bye.
Very good. Okay, next item is citizen comments. This would be the time on the agenda for anyone that'd like to speak to us tonight on an item that's not already on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, do you know of anyone either present or online that would like to speak this evening?
There's no one present or online, and there are no written comments.
Okay. Well, that being the case, we will move on then, thank you. Item six is the fiscal year 2022 budget public hearing. So this, of course, is the budget, and the public hearing for fiscal year 2022 that will begin on July 1st of this year. I will open the public hearing and ask for any comments. We had a presentation at our last council meeting by Finance Director Tony Rotland, very detailed on description of the budget itself. So now this, this evening is a chance for anyone that'd like to speak to us. Mr. Clerk?
Rex Brandstetter would like to speak.
Okay, and John, John Heinz, would you please turn on Rex Brandstetter? John, are you able to do that, or I need, do I need to have Rex raise his virtual hand? Go ahead, Rex.
Can you hear me, folks?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you so much for having me. This, my name's Rex Brandstetter, I live at 2159 Lynn Crest Drive here in Corvino, and I start my discussion tonight by saying I've never had the opportunity to meet Ms. Hi, so hello to you, and congratulations on being elected to the Corvino City Council. I am going to address you this evening on your 2022 FY budget. These opinions are my opinions, based on my review of the facts and the budget as proposed, and as you'll see, as per a recommendation that I might make to you. I continue to find the budget and the details very readily available. Good job on behalf of the city, Tony, and, and your department for making sure, and the mayor, of course, making sure that the citizens of Corvino have access to see this, review it, ask questions, as of course I hope lots and lots of people do. We, we, we don't, I don't care if they do or not, but I want them to, how does that sound? My observation are that the, the department heads that I've talked to and the council all have a common take on the financial status of the city and the need this year to have a flat budget. Now, flat budgets are, is what they are, a flat budget. You can ask, but you may not receive, and that's kind of what's going on. And the two department heads, which I talked face-to-face, also made that statement to me, well Rex, you know, this is a flat budget a year, and I took that very seriously, as they did, without me asking or prompting them, so I'm proud of those people, and I think that emanates from, from the top, from the council, right, right across the board to all of our employees and staff, that this is, if you will, a special year, unfortunately, for sure. After I reviewed this budget, and then I came to my, my conclusions, and then down on the bottom right-hand corner of one of the pages of the city of Corvino Beach that I get, there was one of the conclusions that I came to. So I'm either on the right track, or Tony led the way with this thing, but I came to one of the conclusions that was on there, and that conclusion is, the most glaring item to me in the budget is the loss of over 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars in hotel-millet tax. And if we roll that back, that's 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars not available to us to spend in the manner of which we've laid out and called for in our, in our budgets past. And that is absolutely 100% not anyone's fault, other than the virus, and because of the things that have changed our society and the travel, and people aren't coming here to stay. So that's out of our control, and the beauty of that, if there is one, is the fact that we are apparently, or it looks like, we are able to adapt to that. All right, I think that's a huge, huge plus for the council and the staff. Now, on the other hand, I will say that the Corvino taxpayers are going to be, I like the term burdened, when I see a tax increase, with an additional $19.11 per $100,000 of assessed real estate valuation. Now, so you're saying if you haven't looked up your own valuation, let's just say you have a, your home is assessed at $150,000, you're going to pay about another $30 a year. Well, that's not so bad. However, that increase is a flat, because most of that increase is, again, not your doing, because we've kept the city share the same, right at that from last year, as a matter of fact. The rollback, and I continue to study the rollback, and there's not a lot we can do to that, there, there, there just isn't. So here we are with, with the flat budget. Johnson County will be next, Board of Supervisors with their budget, and then the Iowa City and Kirkri schools will be next with theirs. So the citizens of Corvino are up against the wall here, as are all other citizens, most likely in the Johnson County, to pay more taxes. So as long as we're all in this boat together, we're going to share and share alike on these tax increases. I would say that this is just not caused by the city of Corvino, you're just doing a great job, in my opinion. The cuts are not easy in a budget, I know you've made some cuts, I know you've had a lot of backroom discussions, not everybody can be happy, you never can make everybody happy, not, no matter what you did, and that's another beauty of, of a budget. So I'm saying that you folks of all, all of you, staff and elected officials alike, have done a great job with this thing, knowing what you have or don't have to work with. How's that? And that's the fact. And I'm also saying that you've established at least three really, really good points, in my, in my opinion. Number one, you've established the overall awareness to all staff and departments establishing three following things. Overall awareness that this is a flat budget year, they got the message. You ascertained the message yourselves, and it, it went right through City Hall. Number two, the realization that even in a flat year, we must provide top-notch services to the taxpayers. Well, let's don't pick up garbage this week, well, we know that won't work. So you know, you understand that is the crux of your job, our services, the general public service. And number three, you've shown the ability, and will show, will have to show now, soon when you adopt the budget, the ability to adapt to the new budget and the train of thought, that we cannot hide in the corner, even with the flat budget, that the city of Corvino, we are who we are, we're not going to run and hide and jump in the bushes, we're going to fight through this until we can get back with some things that we're, we're kind of accustomed to, but some things have changed, and we all recognize it. So, in my opinion, based on your hard work and lots and lots of meetings and cold nights at City Hall when you didn't want to go, the mention of Zoom is probably a good thing, for sure, in that, the cooperation, I think, with the staff and departments has been very, very acceptable to me as a taxpayer, and I applaud you for that. So thanks to each one of you for your time and endeavors to serve the taxpayers of Corvino, who I hope pay a lot of attention to the budget and the services that they receive for the dollar we get here in Corvino is outstanding. So, thank you very much, and good evening to you.
Thank you, Rex. We always look forward to your comments, you're, you do your homework, and that's appreciated. Are there any other citizens like to speak to us tonight on the budget?
There are no other citizens present or online wishing to speak about the budget.
And no written comments, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing, and just let the public know that the budget will be officially adopted at our next council meeting, which is on Tuesday, March 23rd. So, that will be the final step, and then the staff will file it with the state as appropriate. Moving on to item seven is the audit report. This is, usually it's Steve, I believe, from Hogan &amp; Hogan, comes once a year to present the results of the, the audit, this year's for fiscal year 2020. Steve Duggan, you have the microphone and the camera, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone, thank you, Mayor. I always like to begin with a thank you to the city for the opportunity to conduct the annual audit, we certainly appreciate that, and appreciate all the cooperation we get from the city staff, from Tony and his staff, and especially Mike Stapleton, who we work very closely with. Staff does a great job in getting us information in a timely manner, and we certainly appreciate that. You have a copy of our audit report, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights, but our auditor's opinion is in the front of the report, and that's an unmodified opinion, so it means the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's the highest level of reporting that we can provide on audited financial statements. As you know, the general fund is the chief operating fund of the city. In 2020, the total revenues in the general fund were approximately 21.6 million. That was down about a million and a half dollars from the year before, and the bulk of that decrease was in the charges for services line of the revenues, and that's a direct impact of the pandemic. The expenses in the general fund this year totaled 22.8 million, that was up about 2.5 million dollars over the prior year. A large portion of that 2, 2.5 million dollar increase, though, about 2 million of that was a large property purchase, that's going to be homes that are being rehabilitated, and so those will be probably sold in the future, and will return as a revenue source at some point in the future. So overall, at the end of the year, the general fund balance stood at about 14.5 million dollars. So when we look at, when we compare that to the expenses of the general fund for the year, excluding the 2 million spent on the land, because that's not a recurring expenditure, the general fund balance was about 70% of the total general fund expenses for the year. So that really, that equates to about eight months of expenses that you have in your general fund, fund balance. So that's an indication of a pretty healthy general fund balance, so that's good, and it is a slight increase over the prior year's general fund balance. Citywide cash decreased about 17 million dollars during the year, and the bulk of that was for ongoing capital projects and loans being made to ArenaCo as part of that overall project, all of those approved in prior years. As well as a reduction in the long-term debt of the governmental funds of the city, so the, the general obligation bonds, TIF bonds, and the new road use tax bonds. During the year, the city issued about 2.0, or I'm sorry, about 9.2 million of governmental debt, and repaid about 15.2, so a net reduction in governmental outstanding debt of about 6 million dollars during the year. The city's enterprise funds all reported operating income, other than the hotel and the transit fund, and again, those were the most directly impacted with the results of the pandemic. Otherwise, the water, sewer, and parking funds all reported positive balances for the year. And then finally, the city expended about 2, about 2.1 million dollars of federal grant funds during the year, and were required as part of our audit to perform compliance testing on those grant funds, and we're pleased to report that there were no issues of non-compliance noted as a result of those tests. Any questions you have about any of that, or the overall conduct of the audit? Be happy to answer those now.
Any questions from the council? Guess not, Steve.
Okay, great.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, well, it's always a pleasure to see you, not in person this time, but via Zoom.
Hopefully next year I'll be back.
Yep, okay. If there's no other comments by the council, good work to our city staff, Tony, and everyone else that contributed to it. I, it's always good news and makes us feel good that things are in order. That's not always the case, as we've read in the media lately, particularly in the smaller, communities much smaller than Corvino, there have been some issues that have been written about. So I feel very secure and very good about our finances in Corvino. Moving on to item number eight is 2500 Holiday Court. This is the second consideration of an ordinance that will rezone property at the corner of Holiday Court and Cross Park Road to Residential Planned Unit Development 2 District to allow for the development of a proposed four-story multifamily building with site amenities. Don, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2021-1002, and ordinance amending the Corvino zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664 as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corvino, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as 2500 Holiday Court, from C2 Arturo Commercial District to RPUD2 Residential Planned Unit Development 2 District, introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion?
Um, yeah, I just had a question that I received from a constituent about this project and the impact on traffic. The question was about, was about the, the completion of Cross Park Road from Holiday Court South to Holiday Road, and this, this constituent wondered when that would be completed. So I thought maybe Dave could, could share the answer to that.
So, this particular project will develop Cross Park Road to the southern boundary of the project site. There's still about another approximate 900 linear feet between the southern boundary to Holiday Road that will need to be connected, and really the schedule driving that connection will largely be determined by development to the east should the university ever do anything with, with that property. So it's, it's really difficult to put it, put in the exact date in with all of the different uncertainties that the university is, has encountered in the, the last year. So it's, it's difficult to provide an exact date.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dave. Our community, he was, Dave Johnson is our community development director, folks. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item nine is Ridge View Edition. This is also a second reading of an ordinance that will change the land use map for a property located west of Jones Boulevard from corporate campus to medium, medium-density residential. Don?
Ordinance number 2021-1003, and ordinance amending the Corvino Community Plan to reflect certain property, generally known as Ridge View Edition, Corvino, Iowa, to be designated medium-density residential use in place of corporate campus use, introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item 10 is Anthropology Tenant Buildout. This is a resolution that simply extends the bid date for tenant improvements for the future anthropology store in the Iowa River Landing to a new bid date of coming up of March 12th, 2021, at 2:00 PM. This was to give the contractors a little bit, a few extra days to work on their bids. The resolution, please.
Resolution setting the date for receiving bids for the anthropology tenant buildout, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 11 is a REAP purchase. This is for the purchase of 45.3 acres from Colony Incorporated in the West Land Use Area for Parkland. The funds for this purchase will be from the REAP, which stands for Resource Enhancement and Protection Grant Program, and from the State Revolving Fund Grant Program for land to enhance and protect stormwater management. The closing date for this acquisition is July 5th, 2021. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a purchase agreement with Colony Inc. to acquire approximately 45.3 acres for open space in the West Land Use Area, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Foster. We have Parks and Recreation Director Sherry Proud with us this evening. Sherry, would, would you like to say anything about this project?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. That you gave a great description of what, what's going to happen here as far as this, this purchase agreement and our purchase that closes July 5th. In the FY 22 budget, we, oh, John has up here on the, the screen, so you can take a look at where these parcels are, the- The parcel A is being purchased on behalf of the city by the Iowa DOT for land that they have acquired for the I eighty three eighty interchange project. So they had to replace that land. B, C, and D are all REAP grants that were written in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty to acquire and finish that section off. And then the parcel E one is part of our funding that we, that, that's a grant program through the Sustainable Revolving Fund, did I say that right, S R F? Which has to do with the wastewater treatment facility. And this is to help with stormwater improvements, to have green, open space and be able to take that water on. And then we'll write, on E two, we'll write a fourth REAP grant this summer and hope that that's successful and we can acquire that last section. So this is all included for planning purposes in FY twenty two. We'll take a look at this land, how it will be laid out. We anticipate that we'll have some nature trails, some opportunities of some signage to be able to learn about the fens, which are those sections there in blue that you see and are really just, it's just a really beautiful parcel of land where we're very excited to show this to the community. It will, it will more than likely be very just undeveloped, open space, some nice walking trails for a while. And as we move through the next few years, we'll start to put away money and develop things like restrooms and shelters, a possible nature center and opportunities to recreate there at the site. And then I would just say that as we go through planning, that will be done by the fall of twenty one. And then by the fall of twenty two, late fall, is when we aim to open this park up for, for hiking and other activities.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions from the council?
I just have a question. We received an Exhibit B also, the access route.
That is for maintenance for our purposes to get there until the fall of twenty two, and then we will revisit the route that would be taken in as far as a walking path in for people using the park.
Okay. Well, there's no other questions. Roll call, please.
Just. Sorry, Kevin.
I'm sorry, just one more comment I'd make, Mayor. The, there was also on the map, if you notice, between the Oakdale Medical Classification Center and this land we're purchasing here is between thirty and forty acres that are owned by the University of Iowa. And we've started the process with them as well. John's going to show that here in a minute. Yeah, so that square right where the arrow is, that forty, approximately forty acres in that block would be put in a conservation easement with the University of Iowa to the city's benefit. So that will also, we're in the process of working with university staff to add that to the park as well. So so really, we'll be ending up with almost between seventy and eighty acres when we're done with this part of the process and hopefully gain some more acres down the road.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Okay, roll call, please. Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
The resolution is approved, all eyes. Item twelve, our Brown Deer Golf Club Management Agreements. There are three items here for three employees of the Brown Deer Golf Club for the city of Corvail. We'll take them each individually. Item A, Don?
Resolution approving that certain management services agreement with Sean McCarty to serve as golf professional at the Brown Deer Golf Course. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Gross. And this is an, each of these agreements goes from January first, twenty twenty one through December thirty first of twenty twenty three. Sherry, is there anything, or Kelly, either one, anything to be said about these agreements, or?
We are just happy and excited to have all three staff members back. Sean has led the helm there at Brown Deer since, I believe, two thousand two, so eighteen, nineteen years, and just does a wonderful job for us. And we get nothing but great compliments about Brown Deer. So we're excited to have the whole team back for another three years.
I agree.
And is it every three years, Sherry, that we, we renew that contract?
Yeah, we've, we've been renewing in three year increments.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments? We'll do a roll call, please. Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
The resolution passes all eyes. And now item B is a same thing for Brian Wernamont as assistant golf pro. Don?
Resolution approving that certain management services agreement with Brian Wernamont to serve as an assistant golf professional at the Brown Deer Golf Course. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments? Ro, roll call? Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Resolution approved, all eyes. And lastly, the same resolution for both, for Golf Club Maintenance Coordinator, Tom Pellicheck.
Resolution approving that certain Brown Deer Golf Club Maintenance Coordinator Agreement with Tom Pellicheck. Introduced for adoption, Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call? Quinn.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Resolution approved, all eyes. Item thirteen, I consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through S inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
By Goodrich. Any questions on the consent calendar? Roll call? Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Quinn.
Hi.
Consent calendar is approved unanimously. Item fourteen is a city administrator's report. Unmute?
Yes, that's what I would like to do. I just want to thank Kevin Olson and Sherry for work on the REAP purchase. That's a project that's gone on for a long time trying to get that land. Very significant environmental benefits of that, of that particular property. And the fens that Sherry pointed out are very unusual to have in a, in an area. And to be able to continue to protect those and make those part of the community system, park system is, I think, a major advantage for us. And just also like to thank the Colony family for their work with us as well, because they stuck with us for a long time as we tried to work through all the processes of these grants and purchase agreements. So I thank all those individuals, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Mayor's report, I don't have much tonight either. I did want to make the public aware that this Thursday morning from eleven until noon, the public can zoom into a United Way present, sponsored presentation on COVID nineteen vaccination in Johnson County. Suresh from the University of Iowa Healthcare and oh, blanking on his name, from Pub, Johnson County Public Health.
Sam Garvis.
Thank you, Sam. Yep, yep, thank you, thank you. Will be the two presenters. If you would like to watch that from eleven to noon on Thursday, just simply go to the city's website. And on the homepage, under the news to know, you'll see the link. You do, it's free, but you do have to pre-register to get, get your Zoom link sent to you. So just do that before Thursday. Should be a very interesting presentation on, on what the, the plans are in store as the they continue to vaccinate more and more groups of folks here in Johnson County. And then the second thing is just a reminder to everyone that we have a call out for folks that would be interested in serving the city on the Citizens and Community Policing Advisory Board. There's seven positions, four of them at large and three with specific characteristics. Take a look at that. Again, that information is on the city's homepage. And those applications have to be turned in by five P M. on Friday, March twenty sixth with the city clerk. So please give that some thought if you might be interested in serving the city in that role. That's all I have tonight. The city attorney's report?
I have nothing, Kevin.
Nothing for me either.
Okay, thank you. Committee and council members' reports. I don't, no particular order. I guess I'll just go backwards on my screen for and that brings up Councilmember Gross first.
So, Mayor, I don't, I don't have a lot. We have a library board Thursday's meeting tomorrow, so unfortunately, I'll, I'll delay my report until after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Megan, Foster, please.
I really don't have much either. I just wanted to remind everybody that to, again, on the rent and utility assistance to please contact the city if, if you plan to apply for the, the programs that are going to be offered by the state. If you contact the city, if you get on the list, your water will, will not be shut off. So do make sure that, that you do contact the city if you intend to apply. And then the only other thing that I have is just to say happy belated International Women's Day. International Women's Day was yesterday, and I just want to say it's a privilege and an honor to serve with some great women. And also, I'm really proud to say that we have a lot of fantastic women department heads as well and a fantastic women, woman assistant city administrator. So happy to celebrate. March is Women's History Month. So we can keep the celebration going even, even beyond yesterday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Hi, you're, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick report from the art commission. And so, good news. They have been rapidly ramming back up to somewhat normalcy. They have had two rental out to two big dance company in, in town, one to debut dance, and the other one coming up soon is for note. And this is for rehearsal before they go on competition. And the staff there take the, the safety measure very seriously. So they put in smaller group of dancer to give them the space to rehearse and then you know, give adequate time between those rehearsal for the air to circulate to make sure that everything is, is safe again to get another group in. They are looking at summer and fall rental to be ran back up to normal. Mostly out of program for the summer and hopefully back to normal with inside viewing by fall. And March twenty ninth is the official launch of the new CCPA website. They have a very, very exciting, you know, website. It's, it's look, it's look to be more friend, user friendly. And it's, it's make the information is easier to find. Also, taxes, tax season is upon us. And I know that the, the Corville Public Library do have information for tax help if any resident is looking for that type of help. At the food pantry, we also have flyer that offer information to where resident can seek that type of help. And see what else here that I have. Oh, and I think our community garden plot is, will be available April fifteenth, I mean, April fifth. It's beautiful today, so it makes me think of gardening and all the fresh produce that we, we will be getting soon. And so I would encourage any community member who are looking for a plot to grow some produce to put into application. And April fifth is when we can officially plant. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Jill?
Thank you, Mayor. As the park liaison, I wanted to remind everybody that it's hiring season. Spring is finally coming, so we're looking for getting applications for camp counselors, lifeguards, swimming instructors, mowing at the golf course, and maintenance staff. So if you could take a look on the Corville website, corville.org/jobopportunities and see if you can pick up any fun summer jobs. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jill. And Laurie, you're up in the corner of my screen. The floor is yours. Unmute?
Appreciate everyone tonight. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Laurie. Nice to hear from you. That's, okay.
Actually, I have one quick question, if I could jump back in, please. So I have a, a resident today asked me that they actually run into a, a problem when they contact the city to ask for assistance when it comes to utility help. And they said that because English is not their first language, well, English is their second language. So they said that when they try to speak to whoever on the other line of the phone, they wasn't sure if they communicated information clearly and whether that person understood what they would like to do. And so my question to city staff, and I guess all of you, is that what can we do if we have a resident who call and doesn't know whether their message is being communicated clearly so that they can get the help that they need?
I, I don't know if the city utilizes this. At the school district, we utilize what's called language line. So when we receive a call, we are able to put that person to hold and then we dial a one eight hundred number and we have access to interpreters and, you know, a myriad of different languages. And then that's how we communicate with those families. It might be a service like that might be worthwhile for the city to consider as well.
Yeah, it was just really difficult to talk to her because she, she was really worried. And she said, I called the city repeatedly and I was just, I, I wasn't sure if they understood me. And I really, really need help. And I just wanted to make sure that they get, you know, my name and my number so that I can be on the list to not get my water turned off. And so I encouraged her to personally go into city hall if, you know, if speaking on the phone might be the problem. So that way, at least, you know, that would give her adequate time to talk to staff. And if there's any staff inside a building that speak another language, might be able to jump in and help. But I, that's, that's, that's the answer that I have for her. And I feel really bad that I couldn't, I couldn't do more.
Yeah, I, I would also suggest ask her if she knows anyone, a friend of hers that is versed in her language as well as English, that could perhaps help her as an interpreter too. If she knows anyone.
And we've also been encouraging people who were, English isn't their first language, to contact the Corville Public Library. The staff there has set up several options. They've, they've organized translators who can work via Zoom or via the phone. And they also have their E L L class who is available as a resource and, and happy to work with people. So the, the library's very much working on that. And, and I believe our materials, I know our materials indicate that the library is a good resource for people who, who need language assistance.
I, yeah, I did refer her to that. And I also told her that the library will have an in-person event to help with that on March twenty seven. But she was just worried that if she wait until then, it may be too late.
Yep, and there's no need to wait. They can, they can sign, line something up individually before then. You don't need to wait until then. That's, that's sort of a separate event and, and that's terrific. But you, you don't need to wait that long. You can do it at any time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just chime in, and I apologize, I just got a text from a, one of our librarians. I, I probably should have said that.
I probably should have said that on that. So just a little bit, I think what Ellen was talking about, but the library is offering to help those filling out utility assistance forms. People needing technology help, including computer access, help finding the forms or scanning them, can stop by the library at any of the staffed hours. Salvation Services as well are invited to join us at a pop-up help event, which will be on Saturday, March 20th, from 10 o'clock in the morning to 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and Tuesday from March 23rd from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And there, the, the library staff will have translators in French, Lingala, Arabic, and Spanish.
The library also, they have a social work intern this semester who I think they really have focused her work on this type of thing.
Good, sound like great resources at the library.
Hey, Mayor, can I say one more thing too? Since I was, I haven't been first like forever, so you caught me off guard. But I, I, you know, for those that watch, we always get a little like updated preview of our meeting and edit. I just want to give Sherry Proud a huge shout out because Kelly shared a story with us about Sherry, just, I think just the great work our staff does about helping. We, we had some elderly folks who didn't have access to computers or emails for this and Sherry personally helped get them connected with vaccinations. So I just, that's a great example and stories of our amazing staff that we had at Corvail. So thank you, Sherry, for the great customer service and just the great care that you provide our citizens.
Thank you, Mitch. Well put. Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mayor, I move that we move our adjourn.
Okay, moved by Gross, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Couple minute break, do people?